Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Greenfield, Massachusetts zoning board of appeals. Today is June 18th, 2025. It is 6:30 PM. And we are all meeting here in City Hall in Greenfield. There's a statement that I read before every meeting, which I will do again now. This meeting is being recorded by by the zoning board of appeals. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20G, quote, "No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If, after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting." End of quote. All right, so roll call of members, all the members that are here.
Peter Rosen.
Jim Nguyen.
Charles Roberts.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
Eric Green.
David Singer. Okay, so we're going to get right into it. Mr. Clark, can you read the first action item, please?
Board deliberation vote on the application of Verity Wireless LLC for property located Zero Fairview West Street West, Assessor's Tax Map R24 Lot 7A, which is located in the general commercial GC zoning district for a variance pursuant to Sections 200-8.7 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the construction of a new wireless communication structure comprised of ground-based equipment cabinets and antenna mounted on top of a monopole 170 feet in height with insufficient falls on.
Thank you. By way of summary, if anyone hasn't been watching these proceedings, just short and sweet, Verity and AT&amp;T have applied under our zoning ordinance 7.14 to build a cell tower. The applicant claims that there is a significant gap in coverage along Route 91 and Route 2 near the Rotary. The applicant, after performing due diligence, has determined that the site, which is on Fairview, is it Fairview Road? Fairview Avenue?
Fairview Street.
Fairview Street. Fairview Street is the best alternative and least intrusive site. And for zoning permission, the applicant needs a variance first from the fall zone provisions of 7.14 and from the height limitations in the GC zone. What I'd like to do is this, unless there's an objection, I'd like someone to make a motion to approve the variance for the following reasons, ending the motion that way. And then we'll have a long discussion about why or why not. The motion could go down, or the motion could pass, but this way at least we're discussing something under a motion. Does anybody have any problem with that?
I'll make the motion.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So read, you have to read the... So, yeah. Eric, second.
My second.
Yeah. So what's the word for allow the variance? What's the word for that?
Mr. Chairman, just a process point. Will Eric be a voting member?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, somebody else needs to say it.
Okay, so before we do that, the members that are, that will be determining this are?
Peter Rosen.
Jim Nguyen.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
David Singer. Thank you very much. Okay, now I need the motion to approve the application, include the variance application and approve the application. If you, if you start with those words and then read with?
I make a motion, we approve the application of Verity Wireless LLC for property located at Fairview Street West, Assessor's Tax Map R24 Lot 7A, which is located in the general commercial zoning district for a variance pursuant to Section 200-8.7 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the construction of a new wireless communication structure composed of a ground-based equipment cabinets and antennas mounted on top of a monopole measuring 170 feet in height with an insufficient falls on.
For, for the following reasons?
For the following reasons.
I have a second? Mark Maloney, second. Okay. So again, I'm guiding you, but please, you know, I really want to hear from you all about what the homework that you've done in this, but what I'd like to do is begin by looking at our variance ordinance and go through the three, at least the three stated, it might be subcategories, three stated criteria for granting a variance, discuss the facts if you need to, and see if if the applicant has been able to provide the right set of circumstances for us to grant the variance. We can also refer to the applicant's submission of last meeting and their reasons, if you wanted to do it by going through them and they're accepting and refuting them, that's okay with me. Now, just so you understand, this is our first time. What I'm talking about here is based on my interpretation of reading case law, some of the things we discussed last time. We first start by looking at the request for variance. The request for variance are two. One is a height variance, and the other is the fall zone variance. We look at them under our ordinance and state law. If we, if we grant the variance in that regard, then we move on to the special permit. If we can't grant the variance under state law, then we have to look into the federal law and talk about significant gap in coverage and those type of factors. It doesn't mean we won't talk about significant gap in coverage when we get to the special permit part, because our ordinance under the wireless asks those questions as well. But, but for purposes of just getting through the variance, either we approve the variance under state law, or we have to go to the federal law, and if we reject it on both those counts, then the applicant has asked us to go forward and go through the special permit criteria anyway, in case it's appealed, then they're successful on appeal. At least the special permit is there with our conditions and our discussion, right? But I didn't mean to jump ahead by saying how we were going to decide, but just what we have ahead of us. So does anybody want to start off with anything, just to start getting the ball rolling?
I mean, in terms of hardship, they've looked at all the other sites. This is the site I can select. Accurate statement. Because if this is the site that's selected, this site, because of the nature of the geography, poses a hardship for them to deal with the falls.
Okay. And that's one of the arguments, I believe, that, that the applicant makes. Another thing we could think about is that we have a bylaw. Now, remember, they're only looking for, this isn't the special permit, this is just the variant. This isn't a situation where the lot itself has kind of funky shape in general. What's going on here is that the applicant is looking to build a cell tower, and it's 170 feet high, and they don't have the distance to get to the, to the border because of wetlands and other things. So it's a little more focused. Their hardship is because their intended use has a factor in, which is the fall zone. And we'll get to more discussion about that. So?
Can I, can I just?
Yeah, sure.
Under the variance, items one and two I just discussed.
Yeah. Oh, you did both of them? Thank you.
Yeah, well, the first one is the hardship.
Well, if you're going to talk about the second one, then can you talk about it not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located?
Well, if you look at that zoning district, you know, that layout doesn't impact any of the, any of the neighbors. As in fact, Tractor Supply doesn't affect the neighborhood. So, you know, I'm just trying to establish that that, that portion is, is not an issue.
So it's, it's a, what you're saying is it's different than the other lots in the neighborhood? It's distinct?
Yes. I mean, it's, it's a distinct location for that tower to be put. And again, I'm speaking just of the, the various, because within the application for a special permit, there's discussion about the other locations. I'm just saying on face, we're saying that this location is the location because of what they need to do. Because if we go to special permit, those same things will be discussed.
Right. Anybody else? Come on, somebody's got something else to say.
I've, I've got 45 years' experience working on towers in New England, down in down south and on Cape. I've never had a tower fall on me. I've never seen one break. I never saw one burn up. We've been out at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning with the snow cats go up around time because the generator didn't start. So I'm not worried about it falling over, breaking, or catching fire.
Okay, that's, that's a good point. That's, that I would think is part of the third criteria. Also, Peter, I think one of the things too you're saying is that, even though you haven't said it out loud, I want to be a little more specific, is that this site has wetlands on it, right, which makes it distinct from the other parts? Okay. We have to say why, even when they're making a conclusion, just trying to draw out the facts.
It is a distinct location for all the surrounding areas within that area.
And one of the things is the wetland, right? Because that stops the fall zone and the shape of the lot, but the shape of the lot.
It's just the size of the lot, right?
Yeah.
Size.
It doesn't conform to the zoning, right?
You're not really allowed to consider that. You're not allowed to consider the, the the dimensions of the lot in terms of it being a hardship. Or the number two in, in, in item A. An odd or unusual, unique shape does not include deficiencies in the depth with an area, especially frontages, to justify a variance. So
there's another side to that as well. I mean, I think the fact that, you know, I believe in engineering, and if the, since the tower is designed to crumple, it will fall inside the fall zone. So our, our ordinance doesn't really address the fact that towers can be designed to collapse and fall within, within the fall zone. So, so go on. So therefore?
Therefore, I mean, I, I, I don't, technically, I mean, by, by according to the math and the engineering, you don't need a variance for the fall zone, because this tower is engineered to fall within the fall zone.
I was just going to make that point also. Not only that, but we, it was peer reviewed by two other engineers to confirm that the design of that mass hole will be, will, will break and stay within the new fall zone. Therefore, the new fall zone, not the 170 feet.
Okay.
In fact, I, I think we, we might consider recommending to the town, city council that the zoning ordinance be amended to that possibility, since when it was written, apparently that did not exist as an option.
Correct. Towers are built differently. Anything else? Deb, Mark?
Yeah, we're, we're still talking about one and two, right?
I think people have moved around, but yeah, we can stay with any one. Any one of them. Just blur. It's not, it's not easy to, it's not easy to organize. I'll, I'll help you organize the thoughts, but just blur it and then we'll.
Yeah, in going through these, you know, the one that I kind of got stuck on was number three. You know, desirable relief may be granted without either substantial detriment to public good or without verifying or substantially derogating from the intended purpose of this ordinance. It's, this is a, this is an opinion answer in regards to, you know, what determines a substantial detriment to the public good or derogating the intended purpose of the ordinance. You know, we've heard a lot from the public in regards to their concern about the public good. Some of the things we're able to consider, some of the things we just aren't allowed to consider based on your FCC regulations, but you know, one of the things that, going through this one is, this is a general commercial district. Somebody referred to it a residential district in one of the meetings. I realize there are homes there, but this is general commercial. It is, well, it's number three out of four in regards to the order in the, in the zoning, zoning ordinance. It is, it is one of the preferred areas. If we're going to put a cell tower, a general commercial district would be the place to footwatch. So, you know, I highlighted something to discuss, but not, you know, I was undecided as to how much, how much weight that had amongst the other two.
One tower be veteran's life. Moment.
Correct. And you know, when we go through the sorting, the purpose?
Dave, can I just be coldness in here? Sure. I don't know. Everybody too cold, too warm?
I did it a little earlier, but it certainly hasn't warmed up. It's over here.
Uh, I've got more to say.
Oh, okay. I did that one. So maybe you're getting?
I was just on the floor, but he got up. So I didn't want to.
That's okay.
So keep going.
Yeah, so that's, that's in regards to variance. The other part's going to be the, if we get, you know, when we discuss the special permit part, I want to just make sure we're staying.
We're still only this going to vary. We have to get through the barriers.
I'm staying in the variance part.
Because the variance has a high standard, not that the special permit doesn't, but the variance has a high standard.
Yeah.
And I have to look at this. I think there was presentation and or comments made that it would devalue or change the value of real estate. There was a report submitted that there would be no degradation to the price of houses by putting a cell, cell tower in place. But I think that, I would think that goes under kind of item three. Because I looked at all of the reports that were there, and it didn't seem to have any major impact on real estate. And the other thing, in terms of visual impact, I go down country more, more often than I want. There's a 200-foot cell tower that I drive right into, and very rarely do I look up to take a look at the cell tower sticking above the trees. And I've been doing that for years. And it's just, you know, it's not that I'm ignoring it, it's just I go by and I don't see it. It's not that I, that's not there. If you look up, it certainly is there. So I think most people looking at a cell tower, you know, unless they try to make a point of looking there, really, I couldn't notice it. Again, I'm not, and I, and I live in a neighborhood where I see as I further go down the street, I go by transmission lines every day, and they're inside my house. And after a while, I, I actually, I don't see them. It's not that they're not there. It's not that they're not aggravating. You know, they become part of the background.
Debbie, were you done, or do you have more to say?
Um, no, the only other thing I have to say in regards to, you know, no, actually, no, that, that's going to be on the other part too. So.
So Chuck's comment is very interesting. I don't know exactly how to legally maneuver to the place that you're at, but let me tell you what my thinking was. A and B, I felt a little wishy-washy about those two criteria being, but you have to have all three. So let's, we need to build that up a little bit. This, this, the lot size and topography and that kind of stuff. But the last one, we artificially created a barrier by saying that the tower had to be in a fall zone that was the same size as the towers, at the same time recognizing in this, in the, in our wireless ordinance that these towers would be tall, because there's nothing in it about height, because the general commercial district has a, I think it has a 60-foot height, not a 40-foot height, but has a 60-foot height limit. But yet there's nothing in the wireless ordinance that talks about any kind of a height limit. So it anticipated tall towers. And so that was put in to overcome that. So for the public good, okay, so the purpose of the, of the item that they're looking to get a variance from, the purpose of that was for safety. That was the sole purpose. However, they come to us with engineering that, that there's a breakpoint, and that if anything were to happen, it would, it would, everything would happen with inside of the fall zone, the so-called fall zone. So the fall zone remains intact, but the distance part is changed from the engineering advances. And because it's the same, we're not derogating from the public good. It's not, we're keeping the public good at the same place. So asking for the variance, asking for the variance keeps everything on an even keel. If we're going to go through the, if we're going to look at it as having to do, to approving the variance, it feels like if they're doing everything that the variance is, that the reason for the variance is there to protect, then why shouldn't we grant the variance? But technically, I mean, technically, the shape of the lot is man, is made by the applicant. The applicant and the owner divided that lot into that socks. So that's not, it's, it's not a historically sized lot. It's a lot that was made at their, whatever economic reasons, they did it. I get the feeling that the lot next door is also wet and has similar conditions. So you've got, you know, you, you've got your, you pick and choose what, where you're going to go. So I would like to think that the wetlands on that lot is really the piece that's different, because I looked around, I walked around, when we went up for the balloon, I wondered if that was a stream that just kind of ran along all the properties, so every property had the same problem. It does not. That property, which is now divided into three lots, that whole property had the wetland problem. So that's, that's the unique aspect of that property, which makes it difficult to put that tower in, which is something that our ordinance is welcoming in that district. So we're welcoming towers in that district. They looked for a piece of land in that district, found a piece of land that had this unusual aspect to it, which is the wetland. And so that created, that creates a hardship. I'm not, I don't know if it creates an economic hardship, but it creates a hardship because the tower can't conform to the technical rules of the ordinance, but they have figured out a way of conforming to the intent and purpose of the ordinance. And when I first saw this application, I wasn't happy about it, because I didn't want, I didn't want this tower to fall past the falls on that. If that had been the consistent engineering discussion, I would not be here saying that I would feel okay granting a variance, because the public, the intent of the, of the, of that portion of the ordinance is to protect the public, but they don't exactly what we've tried to do there. So I don't know if we could say that we could ignore the variance, but I think we could translate the variance similarly to what you've said, Chuck. And, and so a literal enforcement would create hardship. The hardship is the wetlands, the actual hardship, the topography, and the desired belief can be granted without changing anything. If, if, now, if we trust, there was some conversation, so I need to hear from people that, that they trust the engineering and the peer review, that the tower will break, then they, they've done, they've created a situation that, in my opinion, adheres to the ordinance. So therefore, the variance can be granted, right?
Yeah. Every time we walk into a building that's architecturally designed and structurally engineered, we're trusting in the engineering.
I understand.
Yes, to, to, you know, support health, life, and safety and welfare.
Plus, we also had it peer reviewed twice.
Yeah, so we've had multiple people look at it. It's uncomfortable, uncomfortable that the tower is, you know, designed to do what it, what it's intended to do.
It meets all federal and state requirements.
And I think we also need to comment on the, the issue of the wetlands, that we have engineering assurance that the base tower, in spite of the wetland being right there, the base of the tower, concrete or the hole that they'll dig to put it down, that that's a safe measure. And that, that goes to the whole idea of the public good and safety, that in fact, they have designed it to accommodate the wetlands that are there, and that the base will not be a source of failure. So I think.
And they still have to have it inspected. The building inspector still has to sign off on it, which will be a condition as we go forward, but.
In the wayback machine, way back from the beginning, Peter had a lot of concerns about the fact that, you know, they still have to do like a site test to determine what they need to do in order to build the base and make sure it works in, in the soil that they have.
Yeah, that's all.
So that had not gone away. That's still part of.
That's all part of the discussion, which is something to construct that. But as others have said, we've been reassured by our own engineering study. That in fact, what the, the math of what they did, the science of what they did is adequate. And that presentation was also done at the beginning of the process. There was a meeting between Verity and AT&amp;T with the town, with the board, you know, building inspector, the DPW, the planning board.
Called the technical review.
Technical review. And so that was performed early on in the process, even before it came to us. So they had, that was part of their short commentary review at that time. And they also kind of, they made accommodations to some of the comments that were made by the DBW or the fire department in terms of that site design.
So were the real borings done on this site to, for the foundation design?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. But there was a design presented to the peer review, so they have to stick to that design or close to it. So the peer review signed off on a design that they felt was, was, they, they, from their experience, they felt would be okay. At when they, because they, there was a question about whether the applicant should go in and start digging holes and spending money, and they said they wouldn't do it, which is fine. And then they ended up sending a design that corresponded with what they believe will happen there. So that if it, if it's different from that, then there's going to have to be a change.
And there were two peer reviews.
At least with the building inspected.
They had their own peer review, and then we hired a peer review. So it's been peer reviewed twice and tries to come back. Right. And the, the second one, the one that we hired, was answering to us.
Right.
And not to Verity.
Right. Both were, actually. Yes. Okay, so to just, just to make sure for the record, Eric, so we keep this, if somebody's going to appeal this, I want this to be clear, what we're doing. Under A, the soil conditions, the wetlands, is a unique soil condition that is different from the rest of the neighborhood that forces the tower to get closer to it. Under B, we have set up an ordinance that invites people to come in, build cell towers in our general commercial district, and they found a piece of land they could use, but the, but these characteristics brush up against the, the, the proportion of the ordinance that requires that the fall zone be exactly the height of the tower. So that's B. So that a literal enforcement of the provision would provide hardship to them, because they can't reach, they can't meet the 170 feet. But I think the last one is, is the one that really brings together, because as long as the, as long as what they're doing is the same as or better than the reason for that ordinance in the first place, then we're allowed to give them the relief, I believe. Because they're not making things worse. So I would stand on that as, does anybody want to add anything to that? That makes that work? You have experience with this?
I'm going to speak, Mark. Are you good?
No, no, I'm in complete agreement.
Okay.
I'm great.
So if we're on agreement that we, if we're, if we're in agreement on those factors causing us to vote yes, we don't have to then, not at this stage, we don't have to look at the other issues. In the next phase, we are going to have to look at the special permit, but not for the variance. And the variance is narrow. It's just the fall zone, really. I think the height, even though Attorney Rosen is very cautious, I think the height piece, because of the way the ordinance is written, it can't be that the height is 60 feet. I mean, it's, somebody should have written another sentence in there.
You know, it actually, part of the ordinance, it does actually say the minimum height is to allow, is to, it needs to be tall enough to allow future use.
That's what I'm saying.
So I think it's clear in there that there's not a restriction.
Right. Thank you. That's right. So I'm not even sure that needed a variance, but we can include it in the, in the variance for much easier reasons, but for the, definitely the fall zone was the. Okay. So if we're all set, then let's take a vote. So, so the, so the, so Eric, you have all the reasons why. That was your, you feel clear, you have the reasons why we're able to do it?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion hearing? None? Okay, all in favor of granting, I'm going to go roll call. Favor of granting the variance?
Peter Rosen.
And?
I'm in favor. Jim Nguyen, I'm in favor.
Mark Maloney, hi.
Debbie Jokes, hi.
David Singer, hi. Okay, unanimous. The variance has been passed. Just heard an exhale. Okay. Now we get, now the fun begins. Yeah, the all the little of the. You know, the wireless ordinance does cross-reference the special permits and ordinance as well. It, it talks about like, this is in addition to it. So I think we do need to go through the special permit, but I, I think what I'd like to do is go through the wireless ordinance first to sort of tie, because that's a lot of detail. And then we'll go to the, the special permit ordinance. We'll have all those facts laid out, so we can see if everything, you know, if we can see if everything works. That work for you?
Um, I wonder if it would be useful for those listening at home to hear what the purpose of this part of the ordinance is.
Would you please read it?
Yes. So, um, 207.14, the purpose of this or?
Should I move on to the second item?
Oh, yes. Much more. Thank you, Peter.
That's why there's five of us. Seven of us.
Go ahead, here. Board deliberation vote on the application of Verity Wireless LLC for property located at Zero Fairview Street West, Assessor's Map R24 Lot 7A, which is located in the general commercial GC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to Sections 200-4.9, C3, 200-7.14, 200-8.3, and then 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the construction of a new communication structure comprised of ground-based equipment cabinets and antennas on top of a monopole measuring 170 feet in height at this location.
And sitting on this panel are?
Peter Rosen. Jim Nguyen.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
David Singer. Okay, can I hear a motion to approve the application with, for the following reasons and under the following conditions? I just need a motion. Same thing. You read it again with different.
I'll make a motion for the applicant, for the applicant's Verity Wireless LLC for property located at Zero Fairview Street West, Assessor's Map R24 Lot 7A, which is located in the general commercial GC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to Sections 200-4.9 C3, 200-7.14. 200-7.14, 200-8.3, and then 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow for the construction of a new communication structure consisting, excuse me, comprised of ground-based equipment cabinets and antennas on top of a monopole measuring 170 feet in height at this location.
Yeah, I'm going to amend it a little bit. Approve the application, is what you meant. And, uh, for the following reasons and with the following conditions. Okay.
I'll second that.
Second that. Great. Okay. All right. Um, now Debbie, go ahead. Read the, now the discussion.
So I, I want to read, the reason I wanted to, um, actually read this out loud is so that everybody understands. I, I guess mostly for me and hopefully the rest of the board, this is the lens in which we're reviewing everything that comes after. So the town's ordinance states that the purpose of this ordinance is to encourage the development of telecommunications and wireless services while minimizing the adverse impacts of these facilities on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, historic or scenic resources and the environment. Minimize the overall number and height of such facilities to only what is necessary and promote shared use of existing facilities in order to reduce the need for constructing new facilities. So that is the purpose of this ordinance.
Okay.
And then this page is on, but we'll go from there.
All right. So let's go through the ordinance. This where, those who are watching, uh, it's 207.14 that we're starting with. It's the wireless communications facilities ordinance. So the purpose with this read, the definitions, um, but. Okay. So the applicant talked about, um, that particular purpose provision and, um, made it clear that, um, that this application follows the purpose that Deb just read into the record. It's a multi-carrier facility. It's at the minimum height necessary in, in the zoning district. It's on, uh, uh, even though it's in a neighborhood, it's on a vacant parcel of land. And, uh, there's a belief that we have to determine and agree with that there's, um, minimum impact to adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, environment. That's something we will have to discuss as we go through the ordinance, but that's the general, that's the general response that the applicant has given to us, that section. Um, far as definitions go, does anybody have any problem with the fact that all these definitions are part of parcel of what the applicant has submitted? Okay. Um, okay. So the exemptions, uh, so the, let's see. There are exempt, there are certain exemptions. I don't think it meets, it doesn't, this, this application does not meet any of the exemptions. All right. Siting requirements, the applicant has gone through a lot of trouble to let us know. There are four, uh, see how many are there?
There's four.
There's four. Okay. So I'll read them out so people can hear it. So the first preference is on an existing or approved wireless communication structure or existing non-residential structure, general and planned industry districts, general commercial districts, rural residential districts. So for, for the reasons I will discuss as we go along, the applicant has chosen the general commercial district after going through a, uh, their due diligence to try to find locations that met A, A and B. And in their, um, in their final summary, they have spoken about the fact that, uh, this is a very feasible spot to put the tower and, um, that the applicant has tried, has gone and looked at and they've represented. I don't know if they showed us all 20, but maybe they did in, in terms of listing them. But we definitely talked about numerous sites. They've gone to other possible sites, shown us maps, shown us the coverage and made it clear to us that their target of the gap is along Route 91 and Route 2. This is the site that best supports, uh, best provides them with what they need to fill that gap.
Okay.
Please.
In, in their presentation, they, they, they define a specific target area that sets the, the locations of this section. So they couldn't select an industrial park on the other side. They need to have it in this particular area to improve their coverage. So someone says, even though you didn't find an industrial location here, you can put it someplace else.
And there were sites that might've been in a residential neighborhood. So there would have been more zoning barriers. Uh, there would have been sites that were further from the rotary in 91, which is their targeted site that would provide a, uh, smaller coverage. So, and, you know, I think the public should understand that, and, and I'm not saying this cynically. I'm just saying it honestly, that the federal law, um, requires us to, um, unless somebody would, is telling us otherwise, that the applicant, the, the AT&amp;T has to, uh, re, once they represent to us that they have a targeted area, we have to take it as good, as a good faith representation. We hired a peer review engineer to look at the presentation that they made about whether there was actually a gap and the peer review proved that there was. So this is the applicant's, um, this is, this is the applicant's wants and needs for where they want to provide coverage. And the telecommunications act gives them, those who know this business better than us, the right to pick the spot that they want to provide the coverage unless somebody were to rebut it. And as far as I could tell, even though there was, uh, one rebuttal on record, that was, that showed the FCC map, our peer expert said that that, that, that was not an equivalent to the maps and the drive test maps that were given to us. Therefore, in my opinion, if anyone disagrees, let me know. I don't believe that had the same weight as what was presented to us by AT&amp;T and confirmed by the, uh, peer review.
You know, um, just, just as a case in point, because that was such a bone of contention, I actually went to the FCC website and I clicked on and I did a whole bunch of different varieties. Now there's, you can create a map that shows coverage everywhere. And when you start to hover over, it looks like it's a hundred percent. But then when you start picking back some things, you, I mean, you can, depending on what you click on there, it can look like it's a hundred percent, but if you actually go over some cells, they'll need to 43 or 78. And there's three different AT&amp;T listings on there depending on which one you click, depends on what you get for stuff. So, yep. I'd say, you know, that information is a good rule of thumb. It, it's, it's a generality. But to say that you're definitely going to, you know, just because it says a hundred percent coverage while you're standing there doesn't necessarily mean that when you go into mobile, you get different answers. And click on two AT&amp;T, you get different answers. And if you click on all three, you're just one. So, um, I did do my due diligence there in regards to looking at site myself. And you can come up with a bunch of different numbers and it was all red. I'm like, ah, here we go, you know? And then I look at this, it's 43 coverage and 78% coverage. So it looks good, but when you dive into it, there are definitely, there are definitely one cell is 43 and the next one's a hundred right next to it.
And, and to even add to that, we, we mentioned at the last meeting that, um, AT&amp;D doesn't have strong coverage in downtown Greenfield. There are other carriers that have that. So AT&amp;T has their own gap and this is a gap that they want to fill. So they'll, now this community will have coverage that is broader. They don't need to compete for us for one zone. They'll, will have coverage now from another provider in the western part of the city. Okay. The next thing is the height. So minimum necessary to accommodate anticipated future use. I must say again, it's be personally that when I saw the balloon go up and saw how high it went, I'm, I was very surprised. It's very, very tall.
Thank you.
I wondered whether, um, it could be shorter. I felt compelled to keep pushing for that, but, um, AT&amp;D did provide us with information that showed that as the tower gets shorter, I mean, maybe there's a 10 foot that we could get, but, but after that, the, the loss of, um, of, um, customers is significant. And, um, you know, I, you have to weigh that against, it's still going to be tall and, and the carrier again, has the right to, um, to insist in good faith on the best coverage they can get for the amount of money that they're investing in the site. We, I would like to talk at some point, I'm bringing up now, whether there is a rule about a 10% increase on the tower. I'm not saying that that's a right or wrong, but the tower they're asking for at 170 feet would also allow 17 feet automatically. So just, let's just think about, if we say yes to that, there might be some way we want to tie back expansion to at least, I mean, I don't even know if we're allowed to, but to the extent that we can, that they might have to come back and ask for some, show us something that is going on there. But that's, that's not right this second. So are there any, is there anybody here who feels, and this was a moment where I thought we might have some conversation, feels that the tower should be shorter than what the applicant has requested? No.
I would rather, if we're going to, if we're, if we decide to move forward with this, let's put it at the way the ordinance says and put it at a height that'll allow for future use. We already know that they intend to expand. Our ordinance asks that, that that's what we do. You add additional carriers. You might as well allow for that height now than have somebody having to either replace the pole or go looking for another place to put another, you know, another tower and another, you know, cell tower. If it gets to a point where we're going to approve this, let's make it what it needs to be now and, and not have to mess with it again.
Okay. Close up.
I don't feel like we have the expertise to say arbitrary, let's not 10 feet off it. We don't know what that's going to do. We don't.
There's some numbers in here. It's, it, it, it's, it's split in hairs, I think, at that point.
What was the height of the tower at the country fourth road, Peter?
200 feet.
Yeah. So I've seen that tower.
Yeah. This thing, you go by, it's massive.
Oh, yeah.
It's not so small.
And it's on a hill.
Well, it's like the one where you're coming up 91 north, that there, the Deerfield or where, I don't exactly what. But you, they're saying it's right there.
And we put a condition on this that it not be expanded, that it not be raised to a higher tower.
I don't know if we can, but I don't want to, let, let's hold that for the end when we, if, if we agree on all the things that they're asking, that would be the expansion, uh, will be a condition. So let's, let's wait till the end.
Can I, can I just, I think, I think the ordinance says that during the intent of this ordinance is to have a proposer provide extra space for future.
So, right. Was it co, uh, co-use locating, co-location.
I'm sure in their analytical process, they kind of took into account their, their antenna and possibly two, two other, one or two other providers.
The issue for me isn't whether the tower gets higher. It's whether, it's whether going higher means they have to, they have to come back to us or somebody to get permission to do it. So.
One question I would ask is if it goes higher, is it, is it still going to, is the crumple zone still going to, is it still going to fall within the, uh, the fall zone if it could?
Well, uh, it's, I think it's 10% that they can drop. You can help me with this. Is it 10%? What would be the tallest you've, you're allowed?
To expand it?
Yes.
10% or 20 feet, if it was greater.
Okay. And is the tower designed so that if it's, if your height is added, it'll still, it'll still collapse and fall within the fall zone?
I think they would have to show that too.
But I think.
Your question, the tower that it's being designed right now. And George, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is not being designed to add 20 feet to the top of it. You have to build a bigger tower to support the weight of the upper 20 feet, which means if we're going to expand it, we would come back to you with a new tower.
Well, that's what, that's, that's what I'm saying. Okay.
George, just correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, we would.
We are not building an expandable, the pole that you have on your plans is not an expandable pole. So people do build expandable poles, they're wider because they have to have the girth to hold the weight of the extra cables and the extra, the extra antennas. The design you have because of the height and the gap above the tree line is already designed to accommodate, I believe, four carriers and one municipal location. So I, I don't believe you can say that we agree not to ever expand and you can't take away the federal law. But the design as it's in front of you today is not a full design to expand and it is designed to accommodate four carriers and one municipal, like if the fire department needs web, sort of things like that.
And 170 feet.
At 100. Yeah.
So if you were going to expand the tower, you'd take that tower down and put it from that up.
Based on the tower we're building today, unless the technology changes and the weights of the cables go down or the antennas gets much smaller or wider.
It's, so would the foundations be designed to support a heavier structure if it, if it is expanded?
If it were going to be expanded, yeah, we have to, the whole thing would have to be redesigned. It's, it's being designed to support 170 feet.
All right. So for the record, that's, that's, it's important. Okay. So for the record, we're approving 170 feet. You've got an 85 foot, uh, spot, which is, if I do my math right, half that distance. So. Okay. And which meets the bound, which is within the, the shortest boundary.
Correct.
That's great. Cause that, that, I think, I, I feel relieved by that. I would not have wanted to see some, I'll call it a loophole for lack of a better word, in law that would allow you to do that without the town being involved.
So based on your bylaws, being designed to the maximum of a location.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. All right. So that takes care of that. Um, the balloon test street I spoke of, to the greatest extent possible, we cited off bridge line. It's actually below the street, which is good. Um, there's no historic value that I know about not to make fun of the neighborhood. Not, nothing historic there that would be impacted by it. Minimum distance from the base, 20 property line. Okay. So we've already granted a variance for that. I don't think we need to talk about that again. Uh, we can incorporate, uh, Eric by reference, the conversation we had that we are satisfied by both the presentation of the applicant and the peer review engineer that the breakpoint at 85 feet is, uh, is, is the, it creates an equivalent safety mechanism as the ordinance.
Should we refer to that as a hinge point rather than breakpoint?
Yes, correct.
You like that better?
Yeah.
Hinge point.
Sounds more intensely.
Language in this is not the best, but hinge. So I'm happy to be corrected. But the hinge points at 85 feet. Okay, go. Um, setbacks, I, I believe, uh, Eric are all within the proper setbacks for the GC district. I mean, we've.
Correctness.
Speaking of the mundane, but we, I think I, I didn't, I mean, I, I assumed that that was the case, especially when I went.
The access drive properly designed, the location of the, uh, the, uh, the, all the, build outbuilding structures meet all the setbacks. And, uh, parking provided for the maintenance cell meets zoning.
Um, design requirements, there's a list of design requirements. It's my impression, uh, from the tech review and from talking to Erica, a planner, that, uh, the application and the submission of plans complies with all of those requirements, correct?
Yeah. In fact, it, it just is a point for those, uh, listening, um, or may not be familiar with it. Our ordinance actually says only freestanding monopoles are allowed.
Thank you.
So it's, it's designed to meet our order.
That's, that's a narrow, it's only one type of monopole. Right. Uh, okay. The next is the procedures, how to go through this process. Uh, the applicant is well, we're well into that. We, we were, we were given peer review access under our ordinance by the applicant. Thank you. And, um, so that, there's been compliance and satisfaction there. Uh, for citing, um, again, Eric, I presume from the documents that were presented that, uh, all the requirements in, in this section kept up with the exact.
So why number three?
One, Ken?
No, we're on page 11.
Oh, and that's on page number four.
We are after designing for Mr.
You're citing a new wireless facility, site owners be prepared by a professional engineer with this type of, you know, it has all sorts of details and that whole list, that's been applied with. The, the applicant contends that that's the case. I'd like us to say that we confirm. Is that true?
Everything has been.
According to our ordinance.
According to our ordinance, everything has been submitted, uh, except a sample lease agreement should another carrier desire to co-locate. It was in the ordinance that they were, there was some language in there about that. It's happened. Every other item listed there has been, is a yes.
Is that something you need to provide readily? You don't have any?
It's provided directly.
How about a front page that, and a last page that shows that there's a term and there's a signature?
We submit the memorandum of the agreement, which is just one page.
But it, but it has no details.
You ever notice a lease in the registry?
It's recorded.
Yes.
Yeah.
Memorandum. No, it's not recorded.
But you have, you, you, you can get, you can give us that.
Memorandum.
And it has the terms of the lease in it and it's signed by the partners. Okay. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, thank you, Eric. Is that one of the, which, where, where is that? That's number, focus map.
H5.
Two H5.
Seven.
H7? That.
Well, this is, I'm working off of.
Oh, I was working off of, uh, Eric Rosen's.
To go.
So what'd you, what'd you say was G?
Two, G5.
So you plan the plans.
But David, this is this kind of the broken out ordinance.
Yeah, the one that I.
Right, right. Okay. That's on page seven of that teased out ordinance that you sent us to take notes on.
I just want to make sure. Too many sections, all right. We know where we're at. Um, so all of that has been done. A locus map for scale, description of soil and superficial geology has been done, color photographs, many balloon photographs, map showing the signal cover areas, yes. Proof of approval of permits, have we gotten that?
Uh, can you reference where you are, mister?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on Attorney Rosen's, uh, memorandum from.
In the ordinance, it says proof of approval of all federal, state and local permits required for construction and operation. Is that what you're?
Yes, but I'm trying to find it in the.
It's on page seven of the thing that, um, David sent us. I, I didn't, I don't know what page it is in the actual.
Yes, that, that has been supplied, mister.
Here we are, okay, I'm on page one eleven of the book, okay. All right, now we get to the needy part. Um, in granting a special permit for a wireless communication facility, in addition to the findings required by our ordinance, the zoning board shall find the applicant clearly demonstrated that no existing or paid structures can accommodate the wireless communication devices planned for the proposed structure. So what if, I could make a general answer of yes. Is, does anyone want to fill in the yes? Do you, we feel that, uh?
I think they demonstrated that they had options and they chose this one. I wouldn't say that there's no other existing structures approved. I believe that, I, I agree with them that logically we could go through everything. This would be the one I would, I would pick given, using their criteria, but it's not the only one. There are others that just, just doesn't, but it doesn't provide the coverage in the areas they're looking for. So I don't want to split it. I'm not looking to split hairs there. I'm just saying that, you know, it says any other, you know, it says any other, or it's the old, that clearly no existing approved structures can accommodate. Well, existing approved, I don't know if that are existing or.
Well, the radio station tower, that had, that had a problem, even though it was.
And the Hampton Inn and, yes.
And there might be churches in the area where the steeple's not, maybe not high enough or the church is.
No, reading is different. I'm reading it a little bit differently than I did at home. And it's existing or approved and not, some of the ones that might be splitting hairs on where neither existing nor yet approved, so.
So the proposed wireless, oh, the size and the height of the structure is the minimum necessary based on representations of the applicant and uh, our peer review expert, that is true. There has been no rebuttal that would say otherwise, except for the obvious next thing, which is that the wireless facility minimizes its impacts on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, the environment in areas of historic or scenic value. The environment does not mean the idea that there's radiation coming from the tower. The environment to me means wetlands or, so, and the wetlands has been, um, this, the, the Conservation Commission imposed conditions, so that's been done. Adjacent properties, uh, well, the, the owner of the adjacent property is part of this, so seems like that person is, is awful. And we've heard not, except for the residential, which I'll get into emitted, none of the commercial, uh, enterprises in that neighborhood have objected. I guess the rub always is, is that these cell towers are an intrusion to residential neighborhoods and, um, I, like anything else in the law or anything else that we do in life, it's a balancing test, so. You know, if this was in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I would say that it was intrusive. It is in a residential neighborhood on Newton Street and don't misunderstand me, I, I, I do feel badly that this is in front of them, but this zone is a general commercial zone and it anticipates this type of use. So I think to the extent that it's below grade, there are trees around it. You know, you have, you have at least as mu, it's not just sticking right out in the parking lot across the street of the, of the commercial site there. Um, I think they've done the best they could, so. But, but not to say that I think it necessitates the pain of, especially to people on, on Newton Street. But for purposes of what this means, I think they've done everything that they could to minimize the impact.
Which doesn't mean no impact, right? And that's, the ordinance says that it's gonna try to minimize.
Minimize.
That's not saying that there's gonna be zero impact, whatsoever. I mean, that.
You can't do that.
I don't, I don't mean to sound flip about it, but I also.
I mean, if there's a sense of arrogance, the way this was coming in and that there are other options and there were things that we could, conditions we could impose, I think we would, but I think, I think the applicant has demonstrated that they have, they've read that portion of our ordinance and they've, they've worked hard to comply with it, to the extent that they can. Um, it's, is that it?
Yeah.
All wireless communications, I'm gonna maintain a good on repair. I mean, these are conditions that we're gonna cross-reference the ordinance into the special permit anyway, so this will have to be done, uh, the extension or replacement, so it's right in the ordinance. Uh, we might want to state that condition. We might even want to state these conditions out loud and repeat them, but these conditions clearly by incorporating them into the permit, they'll be, uh, they'll have to comply.
And wouldn't, I mean, just, I get a point of reference for anybody who hasn't read it. One of, one of the conditions of use is that it has to be, you know, certified annually, demonstrating structural integrity. So it's like this thing's gonna go up and then no one's ever gonna look at it again and check on it.
Um, and a extension, construction replacement means that they have to come back to the zoning board and the, and the planning and building department. Uh, there we go. So the regulatory compliance, um, if the A, FCC or FAA change their regs, the operator agrees to, uh, bring the facility into compliance within ninety days. Again, that's gonna be incorporated into the permit. Um, so written notice, um, now, I, when we get to the conditions, I'm gonna add something about, but the, the applicant knows ahead of time that if they're out of compliance, there'll be a ninety day notice to them from the building inspector. And then removal, post a bond, that, has that been done or, well, that's, that'll be a condition. You haven't done anything about that yet, right?
No.
And, uh, shall be removed within one year of cessation at the owner's expense. I would like to put a provision there and I'm happy, I don't have it totally written, I'm happy to negotiate. Attorney Rosen, but I think, I think because of the disparity in size and economic power, I'd like there to be a provision in here that if we, if we get, after giving proper notice to the applicant or the lesssee of the property and their, or their successors and, and they don't, and there's non-compliance and we have to take legal action against the applicant, that they will pay our costs and attorney's fees.
Or face it.
What is the reason?
If they had to seek non-compliance and they had to pursue us.
Well, I, I'm not asking for your permission, but I am willing to, uh.
If you put that in as a condition, uh, don't think I would appeal your decision.
Okay.
But the bond takes care of the.
The removal. But, but he's saying if there's a non-compliance issue.
Okay.
Like the FCC changes a rule and now says any tower over a hundred and fifty feet has to be lit.
Right.
Okay, where it's currently over two hundred feet or where it's a, a much higher standard. They lower it to one fifty. Building inspector sends us a letter and says FCC regulations say you now have to light your tower. You have ninety days to light your tower. On day ninety-one, if we haven't lit the tower and the board planner or the building inspector have to send us a legal notice for failure to light the tower and hire a counsel to compel us to light the tower, we're gonna pay for their lawyer.
And how long do we?
You have ninety days.
Is that what it says for?
No, yes, well, but it's not only the non-compliance, it's the removal as well. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want the city to have to keep hounding the owner or the lesssee about removing it and then hire a lawyer and then at the final second after we've, we've used up a lot of attorney's fees and costs, they say, yeah, well, we'll do.
It's just difficult in New England with the snow and the weather.
You have, so on removal, you have one year.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I was, I was actually gonna say, yeah, four seasons. Yeah.
Okay.
One year on removal.
Okay. That, that should actually be added to the.
Question, procedurally, if you're, if you're complying with FCC or FAA regulations, aren't you the operator being one monitored by them and you'd be notified by them for non-compliance?
One would hope.
I think so, I would, for you. I've never gotten a notice on that, but again, I don't usually stay.
To David's point.
Just later. I can tell you which towers I built if we drive up and down the pipe, uh, but, but.
And if you're being regular, I have those two organizations.
I think so.
It would be, site in U or not to city of Greenfield.
I'm more worried about, I'm worried about the removal, but you're.
No, no, but I, but I'm just trying to say, you know, that's one issue and then if, if, if there's, if they're moving, they're, they're, they're giving up their license or whatever. I mean, if that power becomes obsolete, you know.
Which it will.
So, yeah.
And I just, I don't want you to stand, I don't want to hang out there forever.
But I want to be sure. That's only, that's only legal entanglement of this. I mean, all, all the operation of this.
It's on there.
It's on there, okay, but I just, I just wanted to, I want to understand.
Correct. They, he's not gonna be around that long.
I don't really be obsolete in five years.
No, no, I, I mean, someday they will.
Yeah.
So I'm just protecting the future generation of Greenfield as I try to do. Um, all right, so special permit, let's now go to that section, eight point three. So we're done with the, we're done with the wireless facility and merge it with, so the vote is that section and the special permit section. Uh, okay, so if all of the self, right, okay, so we've comported with the rules in eight point three, to the extent that we've gone extensions. All right, so let's look at the criteria, go over them, how tedious that may be. So this is, uh, eight point three F. So provision shall be made for convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian circulation within the site and in relation to adjacent streets and property, uh, the service level of adjacent streets will not be reduced to the added traffic volume. The answer to that is that that's been taken care of by tech review. It won't overload the capacity of water and sewer system, storm drainage schools, solid waste disposal and other public facilities. It's kind of, in, in that regard, it's a benign use. The design of the project, adequate methods of disposal of sewage refuges or other waste generated by the proposed use. I don't think there's that much, but I, but certainly a condition of the. Uh, is, is, is in the plans, do you have a way that you do if you have to take away any waste? I mean, if you have a generator there or you have, is there any waste that'll ever, that'll ever be generated at the site?
From the operators?
Yeah.
Construction debris, but will, I mean, you can make a condition that it be removed, like this cardboard for like evidence and the generator and we usually will either commit or get a condition that will remove and properly dispose of any construction.
Can you put that in there in your notes, because you and I are gonna sit down and write this up, so.
We don't generate any waste, it's just selection, it's like putting a computer.
Okay.
Will one parking space be enough?
Yeah.
It will be.
Okay. Well, there's also, they could probably park on the road too. The proposed project should not increase erosion, flooding or sedimentation consistent with Wetlands Protection Act. That's really the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission and it'll be subject to their, uh, permit. Should not create significant adverse impact on the quality of the natural environment, including vegetation, air surface and ground or during or after construction. Uh, well, as far as air is concerned, we don't know, we can't comment on it, but let's just say that, uh, that, well, that, that there's nothing we can do in that regard. Design the project, and, and they've represented that the standard, whatever the FCC standard is, I think I've, I've read this number of times in the application or in the presentations, it's two point five percent of the maximum radiation level that's allowed.
Care consult.
Yeah.
For, from, correct.
So it's not even at the, a level that Dr. Chamberlain said would be sort of the level the FCC allows. It's two point five percent of that.
That would be FCC allows a hundred or a two point five.
Right, okay, okay. So I think based on the two point five percent, that's, you don't need to say more about it. Design the project with earth removal, volume of cut and fill, grade changes, rules existing trees and vegetation. Again, you know, construction does have the removal of trees, but I think, uh, I mean, I think the project's gonna allow for that to happen and I, I assume you're not, I mean, is there any need for us to protect anything beyond the tower, the trees and everything? I mean, you're not, you don't intend to clear cut them, do you?
No, no, the way, and the way we design.
An order of conditions.
That says you can't?
That, no, that, that specifies what we can and we can't do.
On the, on the site, outside of the wetlands, okay.
And the compound.
The way, the way it's designed, we have an angle so that you're not even cutting a clear driveway in, so you won't be able to stand at the road and look.
There's no view.
Right, it goes, it craves down.
Through that month. So we went, we got conservation approval. We then went and did the TRC. Uh, fire department had comments into TRC. Then we went back to conservation, amended conservation and then applied here. So we, we've already been through conservation, TRC, conservation again. And it's kind of designed like surf the team going down to the bottom. It had huge Christmas cloak, but so that will, rather than a straight driveway, there'll be a few aftertreats cut, but in the way in which it's being cut, it will, there'll always be some screening.
Proposed project not, um, not have a significant adverse fiscal impact on the city in terms of balancing as near as possible to possible public services and public revenue. Buy it through taxes of the income, that's, that's okay. Project shall be compatible, existing uses and other uses allowed by right in the districts and not detract from the character and scale of neighboring properties. Well, I would say that while generally this might be a more like, but might be something that we would take a deeper dive in, because there's a special wireless facilities ordinance, I think that kind of is what we looked at to deal with this. Otherwise, we would have had a different, it would have been a little, the, the, the way we would have looked at it might have been a little different, because the wireless, the wireless facilities ordinance is welcoming the facilities, so I would say C, uh, you know, seven point one O. Design the project should minimize visibility of visibly degrading elements. Yeah, I think that's part of the, that means. Proposed project should be consistent with the purposes and intent of this ordinance, not disordance, but, uh, that seven point, is it seven point one O or seven point?
Seven point one four.
Uh, may establish development phasing, we're not, we don't need phasing, um, responsibility for at least, uh, see the V for at least is our residential development, none of that. No phasing, so that's, that's in a. All right, so in granting a special permit, the special permit may, in accordance, impose conditions, safeguards, limitations, uh, and may, may include but are limited to the following, front, side and, uh, rear yards greater than the minimum required by the ordinance, uh, I think that's happened, but we don't, we don't need to impose that. Well, we don't need to impose it because it's all part of the application. Uh, screening, it's already been done, done. Modification of buildings done, done. This is all tech review. Uh, environmental pollution, I would consider that the narrow scope would be the wetlands. That's, uh, the concom. Interrupt me if I'm saying something that nobody, performance bond, yes. Other conditions, protect the public safety and welfare. Does anybody have anything that they want to add besides my lawyer thinking, my legal thinking? I want to incorporate everything that's been submitted by the applicant into the special permit. So there's gonna be a phrase to do that, so that, I mean, I don't have to name that stuff. Um, and I guess the change of height is built into the ordinance, so that's not gonna happen and there's been a representation that that's not the way it's been designed. Any other conditions anybody can think, have thought about?
I'm just reading, yeah, keep going.
And then I talked specifically about any substantial change, alteration or expansion, so, I mean, we could say that So, I mean, we could say that section I with relation to expansion up is, will be a violation, will be under this jurisdiction. So again, it's going to have the general language of incorporating everything that we do, incorporate by reference, all the, in the peer review and everything else. So that ends the. So to summarize, we've granted the, we've, we've, we've talked about 7.14. It's not going to be built any higher than 170 feet. It's complied with or it's complied with all the other provisions that are generally application oriented. We've agreed that that one, that no other existing approved structure can accommodate the device, the size and height of the structure is the minimum necessary. The proposed, the communication facility has done its best to minimize its impacts. And then there's going to be, you know, the attorney's fees condition and incorporating by reference every, all the applications and the peer review. And that's it. So if there's, if we're ready to vote, you have everything?
I have everything now.
Okay, so I'm, I'll sit with Eric and sort of work out the, how this is going to read, but it'll, it'll be what we said. Okay, no more discussion. So I'm ready to vote. Everybody ready to vote?
Absolutely.
Absolutely and equitably, huh? All right, so if you're in favor, say aye, Peter.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
David? Aye.
Well. Thank you.
It's still light out, it's still all right, right?
Got to go someplace to eat or something.
We went to the, we're going to. Nice.
This is Jim's. Are they on soon?
No, 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 no.
You're off.
Saving some folks in Texas. Yes.
Are we still about minutes?
Yeah, we're nice.
That's something like.
We're done.
Sorry. Oh, it's not.
But he's going to be.
Made in America.
Going to be with people.
Oh.
Yeah.
Gorgeous.
That plus that.
It's a good one.
Done your service, haven't you?
I got all of Mark. Couldn't find anybody to work on.
I got all the files, yeah.
Oh, my God, this one's so thick.
I said in another meeting, you're out there. You didn't plan for it, ZBA, so you don't have to think about similar type like ideas.
No, you're sorry.
Okay, hold on.
Oh, you guys.
No, I just, no, we're.
No, we got another vote.
You all know, as attorney, that works. They'll take a little time to write up the opinion, the, the decision, sign it, submit it to the process office, constantly submit it to the process office, you have 20 days. There'll have to be 20 days for those who wish to appeal to it. Maybe you'll have to, the court, the court will give you the, you know, the court will give you the district of right.
George will come to Georgia, it was again, and think of the decision. Have it, pass on it, open it, and always put it.
It may be appealed, so.
The Main Street goes, just sales pitch, the Main Street goes, a good restaurant. I like, I like it, so I just.
I think it's on Main Street.
It's always right on Main Street, right on the corner of Conway.
Okay, meeting, move on. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's my travels. Nice to meet all of you. We appreciate the attention. We appreciate the personal thing.
Yeah, I wanted to see her. What time is it?
It is like 7:30.
Yeah, dial cell back the way it says.
I might be able to go to Ice cream alley this evening.
Say what?
But I couldn't believe what I saw.
Ice cream alley?
Ice cream alley.
I think there would be, you know, all on my town.
Town lined up, but.
Safety trip hall.
Cheers.
Sort of just driving, I don't know, we'll see. Just want, I just want to say a couple to the board. Hey, we're on, all right?
Yes.
First of all, those of you who read Al Norman's piece in today's paper, this board has demonstrated the highest level of integrity, of listening to the public, giving them all the opportunity that they wanted to speak, asking questions. Those were the three points that he made and this board was not referenced in that article and it sure as hell should have been. And applause given to this board for the way it handled this very difficult decision. So, well done.
I got to re-read that again.
I'll leave, yeah, we have two things to.
The other thing I want to say is you may have sensed as this, as this developed, that I started out being really opposed to this project. I had a lot of concerns, a lot of questions. A lot of it was really difficult and I disagreed with what they were proposing, much as David expressed too. And I think that the process that we used for asking questions and going through all this, even though it took six months, was well worth it and it.
Six months?
Yeah, it changed, it changed my mind about what was necessary here.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I was surprised that I changed my mind because I was really against it from the start, but I think that the questions that I asked and the concerns that I raised were addressed and thank you, David, for allowing me to have a, bring that negative point of view and giving me the opportunity to change my mind.
Well, I want to thank you and Chuck for your input tonight in the deliberations. It's very helpful. You know, being an alternate, it's, doesn't mean you don't participate, so it's important and you got to get your feet wet too, so. The only thing I want to say is, it's interesting, Eric will know this, of how I responded when the application first came in. And I was, I was not happy about it for a long, long time, but I did watch, and I think there are other members of the board that felt the same way as Eric has stated, but I did watch as all of us were able to ask for the right things and, and make good decisions about how to go forward. You are a very good board. You should be really proud of yourselves. This is a very good zoning board. You did very well in a rough year. I was, I was very impressed with how everybody came here and, and spoke about it. We simplified it. It's 98 o'clock. I mean, considering six months of work, we didn't, we knew what we were going to do. We spoke of it very clearly, so thank you all for that. All right, now to the mundane, may I hear a motion to approve the minutes for June 4th, 2025 meeting of the ZBA.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from June 4th, 2025 and June 12th of 2025.
Let's, can we do another step? Thanks, okay.
Who are the minutes of the meeting of June 4th, 2025?
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, but the record shows unanimous. Peter, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 12th, 2025.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I want you to know, as we finish this meeting, that we're going right back into the fire because there's, the next meeting, we're going to have an application for the development up on Stone Farm Road. So, take a deep breath.
That's your only.
We have a lot of experience now.
I don't know, there's like six or seven, there's a lot.
Well, don't have to talk about any more than that, but we have that application coming in, so.
They'll be in July.
We'll be, we'll be back into having a, you know, more sophisticated stuff before us. In any event, may I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record shows unanimous. Good night.
Night.
Thanks, everybody.